Buenas tardes, damas y caballeros, y gracias por unirse a nosotros en vivo desde el estadio de la Iglesia Anglicana Episcopal de San John de la Bautista, aquí en Marsh Harbor, Abaco. Este es el lanzamiento de la iniciativa de la editorial de NasaGuardia y del cable Bahamas en la reunión de la comisión de la ciudad. El propósito de estas reuniones es traer un foco en las comunidades en todo el Bahamas y proyectar ese foco hacia el exterior a la nación. Esta noche comenzaremos nuestra reunión en Abaco, como los ojos de la nación se enfocan en esta comunidad con la pendiente elección de voto y otros temas en la mesa. Hosteando nuestra reunión de la ciudad esta noche serán Darryl Miller, así como Silbert Mills, nuestro socio de radio Abaco. Pueden escuchar esta reunión en vivo en la radio Guardian 96.9 y en la radio Abaco 93.5. Estaremos aquí durante varias horas e intentaremos disecar los temas que afectan a Abaco y también afectan a la nación. Ahora nos unimos a Darryl Miller y Silbert Mills para comenzar nuestro programa.
Muchas gracias. Buenas tardes a todos, soy Darryl Miller. En este The Commonwealth of the Bahamas, Abaco ha sido aclamado por su característica única y reputación. El mismo espíritu que llevó a este país de libertad política también llevó a la realización de que para continuar sobreviviendo, uno debe aprovechar los vastos recursos de la tierra y el mar. Hay majestad y ingenuidad aquí en la tierra principal y definitivamente en las islas y las islas circundantes. Muchos pioneros están aquí y trabajan junto con la nueva generación de abacones para mantener esta vivienda y diversa economía vivo y funcionando. Y Silbert Mills, hemos reunido a muchos de esos pioneros y muchos de aquellos que han venido a Abaco para participar en este evento histórico.
Gracias, Darryl. Buenas tardes, Bahamas. Buenas tardes, Abaco. Veniendo de una isla que es un marcador de ritmo, esta reunión de la ciudad esta noche que está siendo transmitida en vivo ciertamente es una iniciativa que coloca a Abaco antes de los demás. Abaco ha sido conocido por un cambio en su capital. Históricamente, nuestro capital amplió la isla Green Turtle, luego se mudó a Hope Town y ahora aquí en Marsh Harbor. Y quién sabe dónde más será, con la nacimiento y construcción del complejo gobierno central de Abaco, ahora con una parte en Hope, en Marsh Harbor, la otra parte en Dundas Town moviéndose hacia el oeste. Nuestro pueblo es industrioso, muy independiente de pensamiento, y a veces nuestro pensamiento independiente es mal caracterizado por muchos, pero hararemos lo que tenemos que hacer en Abaco para que suceda, a pesar de quién lidera a la nación. Bienvenidos a la reunión de la ciudad esta noche. Es un placer.
Vaya, Silbert Mills, y introduzca a nuestro panel para esta noche.
Nuestro panel para esta noche, un grupo de señores distinguidos. Entonces, desafortunadamente, no pensamos en poner una señora aquí, porque Abaco tiene muchas señoras calificadas.
De hecho.
De hecho, que podrían sentarse aquí. Veo a muchos de ellos en la audiencia aquí vestidos en azul.
Y rojo.
Y rojo. Pero empezando a la izquierda, tenemos al señor Dave Ralph, que representa la Cámara de Comercio de Abaco. El senador Jhonbo Chavago Lang, representando el movimiento de la libertad nacional. Unimos a nosotros como Consejo Distrito para Central Abaco, el señor George Cornish. Y al final, representando la clergía, de la franja Abaco del Consejo Cristo de Bahamas, el pastor Stephen Knowles. Ahora, uniendo nosotros más tarde será el ministro Kendrick Dorsett.
Kendrick Dorsett. Se unirá a nosotros momentáneamente en sólo cinco minutos. Él es el ministro de Enfermedades y Ambientes en esta administración liderada por el Primer Ministro, el Honorable Perry Gladstone Christie. ¿Empezaremos con la elección de voto o con la votación? Vamos a la elección de voto. Y esperamos una vez más que Kendrick Dorsett nos una momentáneamente. Su primera pregunta.
Habiendo dicho eso, Abaco está surgiendo con actividad. Esto es tan bueno para nuestra economía. No hemos visto este tipo de negocio de octubre nunca. Para todos los que han descendido sobre nosotros y para nosotros esto es grandioso. Tenemos de la Cámara de Comercio, bueno, ya que estamos hablando político, vamos a ir con el político primero. Senador Lang, te ponemos en el asiento caliente. Esta elección de voto acercándose a la pierna de una elección nacional, de una elección general. ¿Cómo ha visto su partido esto, siendo básicamente responsable de la elección de ser llamada tan rápido?
¿Cómo lo vemos?
¿Cómo ve usted esto? Esta elección de voto, esta elección de voto es una responsabilidad directa del movimiento de la libertad nacional, un movimiento hecho por el movimiento de la libertad nacional.
Bueno, buenas tardes a ustedes y a todos sus oyentes y espectadores. Es bueno estar en Abaco y es bueno estar aquí esta noche. Pero naturalmente tenemos una situación constitucional que surgió como consecuencia de la anterior miembro del parlamento, el Honorable Hubert Alexander Ingram, determinando que él ha llevado su carrera política a un final. Y una vez establecida una vacante en un asiento, entonces la consecuencia natural de eso es que una elección de voto sea llamada, porque la gente tiene que tener representación. Y así, manteniendo eso, ofrecimos a nuestro candidato a reemplazar al señor Ingram en la persona de Greg Gómez. Y así estamos haciendo nuestro mejor esfuerzo para ayudarlo a hacer el caso a Norte Abaco de que él y el movimiento de la libertad nacional son el grupo que representa a Norte Abaco, continúen representando a Norte Abaco en la Casa de Asamblea, y por eso estamos aquí.
El Partido Liberal Progresivo llama este asiento su asiento. Fueron en la elección de 1972, elección de 1977, esto fue ganado por el lejano Sherwin Boodle. Y luego llegó el señor Ingram en 1977 y entonces nomina a él como PLP para ser su portero de la norma. ¿Cómo aborda el tema de que se llame en términos del Partido Liberal Progresivo? Nuestra cosa, queremos nuestro asiento de vuelta.
Bueno, si quiere ser presumptivo sobre lo que pertenece a la gente, entonces está bien, puede decir, esto es mi cosa. La realidad es que el asiento pertenece a la gente de Norte Abaco y ellos han determinado quién será su representante. En el pasado, habían determinado que era el representante del Partido Liberal Progresivo por un tiempo, pero durante los últimos 15, 20 años, han determinado que el Honorable Hubert Alexander Ingram, por mucho de eso, como representante del movimiento de la libertad nacional sería su representante. Y así el asiento no pertenece al FNM, no pertenece al PLP, pertenece a la gente de Norte Abaco y ellos determinarán de nuevo quién les representará en la Casa de Asamblea.
Las alturas de turnos, usted fue una vez en el gobierno. ¿Siente el underdog en el asiento?
No, no lo hacemos, no lo hacemos. Siente que somos uno de los dos grupos que apoyan aquello que pertenece a la gente de Norte Abaco y que tienen derecho a determinar quién les representará. Creemos muy confidantemente que la gente de Norte Abaco, habiendo tenido el beneficio de ver lo que el movimiento de la libertad nacional y su representante han hecho por ellos en Norte Abaco y trayendo este lugar a un nivel enorme de progreso y desarrollo, continuará haciéndonos representarlos en la Casa de Asamblea. Creemos eso y esperamos que el 15 de octubre eso es lo que va a pasar.
Darryl. El senador Lang, parece haber un balón de confusión rodeando la candidatura de Greg ¿Puede hablar de ello, comenzando con la declaración de activos y de deudas, la declaración de salario? ¿Y eso está causando un conundrum dentro de la dirección de la FNM?
Bueno, no estoy completamente seguro de dónde está la confusión en términos de su candidatura. Él es el candidato del movimiento de la libertad nacional para esta próxima elección de voto, nominado de forma adecuada en el momento de la elección de voto. Cualquier problema de cualquier sustancial naturaleza asociado con su elegibilidad no es una cuestión de inquirir en la prensa, es una cuestión de aquellos que tienen que determinar que es de forma adecuada cualificado para nominar. Y he oído que ningún oficial o formal o legítimo o legal dijo nada sobre esta identificación de la cualidad de este señor para ser el candidato en esta próxima elección de voto. Hemos tenido algunas discusiones sobre su declaración, si alguien le pregunta si es salario o ingreso. Lo que este joven hizo fue declarar lo que recibió en un periodo. Esa es la honestidad que estaba expresando en lo que recibió en términos de su ingreso. Así que no hay ninguna duda sobre eso, a lo que me dé cuenta.
¿Fue privado de la entrevista llevada a cabo por el editor de noticias Guardian, Candy Adine?
Sí, lo vi.
Con Greg Gómez.
Lo vi.
¿Hubo algún desastre en su parte?
¿Desastres en términos de qué?
Desastres en su pensamiento y desastres en su honestidad.
No, no hubo desastres en su honestidad en absoluto, en absoluto, en respecto de lo que indicó, lo que escuché en respecto de su entrevista. Y en términos de cualquier desastre en su pensamiento, bueno, quiero decir, no vi ningún desastre en su pensamiento. Saben, en general, en estas elecciones generales, aquellos que vienen por primera vez tienen el beneficio de ser en general uno de muchos, 40 hasta ahora. Esto sucede en una carrera de uno contra uno por un asiento que estaba ocupado por un legendario político. Hay muchos ojos en este asiento. Y así, si tiene en una entrevista a un nuevo candidato que a veces siente su camino, incluso yo siento mi camino de vez en cuando durante el curso de una entrevista.
Pero usted, señor, sabría dónde trabajó.
Sí, y así lo hizo él. Y así lo hizo él. Así lo hizo él. Y déjeme decir esto mucho, Darryl. Estoy aquí, no he sido invitado a estar aquí. Y si alguien me llama un mentiroso bajo su boca o por encima de su boca mientras hablo, voy a llamarlos. Azul, rojo, azul o blanco. No estoy aquí mintiendo a nadie, ni Greg Gómez. Vamos a establecer el escenario para este evento, por favor. Vamos a ser cordiales unos a otros.
Señor, señor Lang, en las noticias de Jones esta noche, la noticia principal de ese evento de noticias esta noche fue de un llamador de una escuela en Florida, verificando la contratación de Greg.
Sin duda. Sí, señor.
¿Puede que la gente bahamiana confíe en ese llamado para ser un llamado legítimo?
Sin duda. Y no solo eso.
Porque la persona que se pretendía ser algún oficial alto de esta escuela confirma la contratación de Greg. Estamos tratando de un llamado telefónico ahora, no sabemos quién está del otro lado.
No necesitamos el llamado telefónico. Tenemos evidencia irrefutable de su contratación en los lugares donde dijo que trabajaba. Ninguna duda sobre eso, en absoluto. Ninguna duda en absoluto. Desde la dirección del movimiento de la libertad nacional hasta cada miembro de esta organización, no tenemos dudas sobre su haber trabajado donde dijo que trabajaba.
Y la pregunta surge sobre la entrevista y su fallido respeto a eso.
Saben, hay una explicación para eso, pero creo que esto es verdad, esto es establecido. No hubo decepción, no mintieron, solo verdad sobre dónde dijo que trabajaba. Eso es el hecho.
Darryl. Déjame quitar algo del foco del senador Lang y pasar a Dave Ralph, que es de la Cámara de Comercio. El co-host Silbert Mills dijo, esto es una buena propuesta para Abaco. ¿Usted y los miembros de la Cámara de Comercio están viendo eso en términos reales, en dinero?
Es un poco difícil, no tenemos un banco central de Abaco que postease figuras en otros gobiernos, otros estados, otras municipalidades. Creo que nuestra comunidad de negocios es tan feliz como cualquier otra. Creo que nuestro estado económico está un poco por encima de la mayoría de las áreas del Bahamas. Algunas de nuestras principales ciudades, Green Turtle, Hope Town, están en general encajando. Sin embargo, en este momento del año, la mayoría de nuestros lugares de turismo están en caída, es normal. Septiembre, octubre son típicamente meses bajos para nosotros, como el mes de enero. A cierto punto, esto es un fenómeno mundial. Las escuelas se hagan hambre, las familias se reorganizan. Puede que haya elementos de miedo a los huracanes, no estoy seguro de por qué la gente viene y por qué no viene. Estamos, por la mayor parte, haciendo mejor, creo, que en la mayoría de las áreas. Cuando hablas de la Comunidad de Marsh Harbor, de la Comunidad de Abaco, Marsh Harbor es ciertamente el centro comercial. Tenemos una base de turismo, pero la actividad de turismo típicamente está un poco más allá afuera de Marsh Harbor. Treasure, Baker's, Windin' Bay, Rest Carlton, Hope Town, Green Turtle. Y creo que encontrarán que esas áreas están en caída, pero si quieren compararlas, y no tengo ningún modo fácil de hacer eso, pero si quieren compararlas con otras islas, creo que encontrarán que es un poco mejor que en otras áreas.
Cuando el Primer Ministro Christie decidió llevar una reunión de cargo aquí, ¿lo aceptó o tuvo una segunda opinión sobre esto?
Bueno, hablando ahora de la comunidad de negocios, que represento, no nos involucramos demasiado en la política de la situación. Es interesante que el gobierno eligió venir aquí. Tenemos un nuevo edificio que se le da a ese tipo de cosa. Creo que habla bien para la área en la que pudimos hostear. Si fue un ejercicio gubernamental viable o no, no voy a involucrarme demasiado. Fue ciertamente un gran ejercicio de relaciones públicas venir aquí y llevar una reunión aquí. Nunca se ha hecho en una isla fuera antes y me agradece que la publicidad fue buena para nosotros.
El jefe consejero para Central Abaco, George Cornish, también está en nuestro panel. ¿Comparte esa visión? ¿Aceptó la reunión de cargo aquí?
Señor Miller, a cualquier momento me agradece a miembros del parlamento, ministros del gobierno en Abaco, especialmente aquellos que representaban diferentes agencias gubernamentales. Bajo el FNM, bajo el PLP, algunos ministros no hemos visto en Abaco. Así que pensé que era una buena oportunidad para aquellos ministros que representan postes ministeriales para venir y ver qué está haciendo su ministerio en Abaco, visitar algunos oficios, la gente que dirige esos oficios, sus diferentes ministerios, carreteras, Ministerio de Trabajo, gobierno local. Y saben, puede que nunca los vean en los próximos cuatro años.
¿Podría haber sido mal construido como un broma política?
Saben, todos tienen su propia opinión sobre lo que era y lo que no es. Saben, todo depende de la parte que tomes, porque si la otra parte lo hubiera hecho cuando estuvieran en el poder, la siguiente parte habría dicho. Así es como lo veo. Cuando el primer ministro estaba en el oficio en el momento en que estaba allí y dijo, este oficio es realmente bueno, es mejor que algo que no vi. Creo que deberíamos llevar una reunión de cargo ahí. No me opongo a eso. Estaba contento que vinieran. Saben, como dije, todos tienen sus opiniones sobre lo que no debería haber ocurrido, lo que debería haber ocurrido, pero él es el primer ministro del país. Si dijo que íbamos a la reunión de voto en Abaco, vamos.
El señor Lang, el movimiento de la libertad nacional hizo una declaración en relación con el primer ministro que vino aquí y lo llamó un desperdicio de dinero.
Entonces, has escuchado de el movimiento de la libertad nacional.
Y esa es la posición en sí, esa es su visión.
La posición del movimiento de la libertad nacional.
¿Un gobierno dirigido por Chavago Lang hubiera hecho eso?
Sí, pero no tengo ningún gobierno dirigido por él.
¿Me contestas?
Y así es realmente el punto de ánimo, en mi vista, realmente. Saben, les diré esto mucho, más importante que dónde se celebra la reunión es lo que hizo la reunión y creo que tomará algún tiempo para descubrir lo que hizo la reunión.
Así que tiene la visión de que la reunión fue una reunión política preparada para la elección de voto.
Pero quiero decir, no creo que haya ninguna duda de que fue parte de un ejercicio político, pero son políticos y así, si eres un político, haces cosas políticas, no hay problema.
También en nuestro panel esta noche está el pastor Stephen Knowles, que es el presidente del Consejo Cristo de Abaco. Y normalmente no dabilas en la política, pero esta noche es tu noche. ¿Cuál es su visión sobre la reunión de cargo que se celebra aquí en Abaco?
Pensé que cuando aprendí que la reunión de cargo debía ser celebrada en Abaco, me retiré del pensamiento de que tal reunión se celebre fuera de la capital. Pero lo que fue interesante fue que vi tantas personas jóvenes, como incluso mis hijas y jóvenes personas en Abaco. La exposición, toda la idea de que el gobierno de la época movería tal reunión de la capital a una isla, creo que dijo algo. Y por la moraleja, por esta idea de que somos uno de los Bahamas, y si es Andros o Luther o Gran Bahama o Exomer, no sé si quiero, saben, entrar en el barrio de la cerveza que habla de que había un desperdicio de tiempo o un desperdicio de dinero. Pensé que era diferente, pensé que era bueno. Y si es un gobierno PLP o un FNM o cualquier otro gobierno, personalmente me gustaría ver al gobierno de los Bahamas tomar más medidas innovadoras como esta, porque creo que tiene una manera de traer toda la isla y hacer que las islas familiares se sientan un poco más importantes.
Darryl. Quiero preguntar.
Tenemos que tomar nuestra primera pausa. Están conectados a la reunión de la ciudad de NasaGuardia, Bahamas, reunión de la ciudad nacional en conjunto con radio Abaco, viendo a Darryl Miller y usted, Silbert Mills, aquí en Abaco.
Bienvenidos de nuevo a nuestra reunión de la ciudad especial. Nos alegra tener como panelistas a Dave Ralph de la Cámara de Comercio de Abaco, el senador Chavago Lang del movimiento de la libertad nacional, jefe consejero para Central Abaco, George Cornish, el pastor Stephen Knowles, presidente del Consejo Cristo de Abaco. Y en transito, unimos a nosotros pronto al ministro de Enfermedades y Ambientes, el Honorable Kendrick Dorsett. Nuestro co-host, Silbert Mills. Silbert.
Gracias, Darryl. Vamos a volver al panel aquí esta noche, un panel distinto, de hecho. Y déjame volver a usted, el presidente del Consejo Cristo, y luego volveremos a los otros paneles. Tenemos tres candidatos cristianos. Tres candidatos cristianos. No creo que hemos tenido en una constituency tres candidatos cristianos corriendo. ¿Qué son sus expectativas?
Esa es una buena pregunta. Mi expectativa es que el que subirá a la ocasión para representar a la gente de Norte Abaco sería la persona que Dios tendría que liderar en Norte Abaco en este季节. Y saben, hay un escritorio que dice, cuando los rectos están en dirección, la gente se alegra. Y es interesante que en este particular季节, y tal vez la primera vez en los Bahamas, realmente veamos a dos, tres cristianos profetizados.
Nacidos de nuevo.
Nacidos de nuevo, dedicándose a servir a una comunidad. Y así el Consejo Cristo está rezando. Quiero decir, rezamos y pedimos al Dios que, mientras los tres personas salgan a través de las comunidades, mientras presentan sus plataformas a la comunidad, que la gente sea justa. Saben, una de las cosas que no queremos ver es, no queremos ver nombres arrastrados por las calles. No queremos que se digan malas palabras a ninguno de los candidatos. Lo que queremos ver suceder es justicia y respeto. Y queremos ver que a medida que la campaña avanza, que al final del día, dejen que la gente vaya a los votos y dejen que la gente decida. Y rezamos que la transición sea suave y que Dios sea glorificado y que la gente de Norte Abaco tenga una buena representación.
Señor, senador Lang, usted, siendo cristiano de nuevo, usted mismo, ¿expecta que vea que sea una campaña muy limpia con los tres candidatos cristianos?
Expecto que los candidatos se comporten de esa manera.
Pero.
Expecto que los candidatos se comporten de esa manera.
Pero.
Pero ya hemos visto algunas cosas no cristianas siendo hechas en respecto de cómo, precisamente lo que el pastor ha indicado no debería suceder. Así que, hey, este es el mundo en el que vivimos. No todos observan los principios y valores que Cristo expone, entendemos eso, incluso en una carrera entre tres cristianos.
Dave Ralph, déjame preguntarle, ¿cuánto es esta elección de voto polarizando la Comunidad de Norte Abaco? Polarizando en términos de PLP de un lado, FNM de otro, negros de un lado, blancos de otro. ¿Está sucediendo eso y a qué punto está sucediendo?
Está pidiéndome que me aleje del reino de la Cámara de Comercio. Tratamos de la comunidad de negocios, aspectos de negocios.
Pero usted es un escritor, Dave, así que vamos a incorporarlo.
No, no, yo, saben, yo era como un entrenador. Tenía escritores que escribían y tenía que unir al equipo y ir con él. Escribí muy poco. En el campo político, logré mantenerme bastante alejado de ello personalmente. No fue fácil de hacer, de rodar la pared.
Así que está pidiendo el quinto, vamos a seguir.
No, 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 él quiere responder.
Diga algo.
Él quiere responder.
Estás bailando con este tema.
Creo que me ha puesto en medio. La Cámara es neutral en cualquier aspecto de esto. Le deseamos lo mejor.
Por eso dije, vamos a seguir. Quiero traer la misma pregunta a George Cornish, el jefe consejero para Central Abaco. ¿Ha visto que estas comunidades en Norte Abaco se polarizan?
Saben, a veces tienes que ser muy cuidado con cómo dices lo que dices, porque la gente intentará.
Podríamos girarlo.
Sí, podría decir lo que quiero decir, saben. Nunca he visto en Abaco como esto en mi vida. I've never seen an Abaco like this in my life. You have the aspiring politicians, the MPs, the ministers, the cabinet ministers, the former prime minister, the prime minister, all in Abaco for this one seat. I've never seen it like this before in my life. You have the FNM on one side, the PLP on the next side, and you have the independent on the other side. Now, us as Abacunians have to understand one thing. All of these people are here, but after the 15th, they're gone. And Greg Gomez and Renato Curry are gonna be here living together. And what they have to understand is, Renato Curry's wife and Greg Gomez are family. So, like Mr. Lang has said, there were some things said. And some people find it as a joke, but, you know, to me, it isn't funny. And, you know, you put right where right is and wrong where wrong is, some things should have not been said, because if you have a candidate with his wife is sitting there and some things said about the cousin, how does she feel? And you have to put these people's feeling in perspective because it hurts, because that's blood, okay? And like I said, these people will be gone tomorrow or after the 15th, they're gone. And we have to stay here. And whether Greg Gomez wins or Renato Curry wins, they all have to wait together for the betterment of Abaco. So they're gonna be gone. We're gonna be here and we have to live together.
So do you see some kind of division? There is a divide line? You see that polarizing?
You know, Mr. Mills, I actually was in Freeport, the local government conference on that night, and, you know, I forgot that even the rally was on the television. And my cousin called me, getting ready to go, and he said, "The rally's on TV." And we sat there and we watched and we listened. And, you know, I said to myself, after it was over, "I can't wait to see what the other side will say." Because I believe that it was going fine until now, when these rallies start, you will hear some things, you'll see some things. But at the end of the day, I still say that all these people that are here will be gone in Nassau, Freeport, or wherever they come from, and us Abacunians will be here to fend for ourselves.
But Senator Lang, this is not Sunday School. This is not the divine worship service. This is politics.
I think that there is, in our environment, in our democracy, going to be divisions. There's a natural political division. There's the Progressive Liberal Party, there's the Free National Movement. In other circumstances, there are other groupings. So division is going to happen in a democracy. In fact, a democracy has no viability where there are not competing factions. The problem is, when we take the division to the point of personalness, when that division has to do with your person, your humanity, has to do with those kinds of things, to the extent that once the battle is over, there is still a war between the persons. That's what we have to be careful about. Now, I can't say that that is what is happening yet or now, but I'm saying, I think that is what Mr. Cornish is saying, that we need to be careful about. That once this battle is over and all the soldiers who don't live here go home, that the people who call Abaco home can live like the family Abaco is. And that just makes sense.
But I understand that. But these two good Christian men, three good Christian people, must understand that what they entered was not youth meeting.
No, that is true. That is true. That doesn't mean, though, because there is main spiritness in an exercise in which you become a part, that you have to be a part of the mainness of the exercise. So you can have, in the profession of law, good and character lawyers, and you can have the other side. In the profession of medicine, you can have good and character doctors on the other side. So just because you can have, in politics, main spiritedness, doesn't mean that you have to be a part of that. And that's a choice that they will have to make.
Let me welcome to our panel the Minister of the Environment and Housing, the Honorable Kenred Dorsett. Thank you, Mr. Dorsett, for coming.
Good evening and thank you.
And once again, also on our panel, seated next to the Minister, is Dave Ralph of the Abaco Chamber of Commerce, Senator Chicago Lang of the Free National Movement, Chief Counselor for Central Abaco, George Cornish, and Pastor Stephen Knowles, President of the Abaco Christian Council. I'm not sure, Minister, if you had the privilege of hearing any of this on radio while you were in commute here, but we have been having a very lively, spirited conversation.
Well, I'm happy to join it.
Focusing mainly thus far on the by-election that is coming up on October 15th. I want to ask you, when the Prime Minister says at a rally to Renato Curry that he is assured a seat around the table, what does that mean to you? And is that right to say at a rally? Is he preempting cabinet by saying that? Is something wrong with that?
I don't think there's anything wrong with that. At the end of the day, anyone who sits in cabinet serves at the pleasure of the Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. And so what he meant by that, I believe, is that Renato Curry has a significant role to play in his administration, and what that role will be, will be determined by him.
Was it overconfidence on the part of the Prime Minister and the PLP to believe to such an extent that they will win their seat?
No, I think that we are very confident that Renato Curry will be successful on the 15th of October. And certainly for me, having regard for the fact that I have been on the ground going door to door, I think that a lot of people are prepared, who have not traditionally voted for the Progressive Liberal Party, to give Mr. Renato Curry an opportunity. For the mere fact that the PLP is the government, they feel that he is going to be able to continue to be of service for them and get things done. They speak to him as being a very humble, Christian, young man, and a lot of people are prepared to give him a chance.
The other panelists have shared their views on the cabinet meeting held here. What are your views?
I think that it was something that was long overdue. I think the vast majority of Bahamians, particularly in the family islands, feel that sometimes government is too Nassau-centric. I think the fact that we have been given an opportunity to come here and sit as a cabinet and dispense with the business of the people here in the family islands is a step in the right direction. And I welcome the opportunity for us to visit Grand Bahama very soon to have a cabinet meeting there as well.
But couldn't some of that money been better spent patching the portholes?
Well, my understanding is the portholes will be patched, notwithstanding the fact that we have had the cabinet meeting. But I think it speaks to the fact that this administration is mindful of the needs of serving all Bahamians, not just those in Nassau. And so I think that Brother Silbert Mills put it very well during that cabinet meeting, when he said that he did not see any signs at the Abaco Airport telling us not to come and have the cabinet meeting here in Marshaba.
Silbert?
I'm sorry, I wonder...
Let me...
I'm sorry, I just wonder if I might just interject this a bit. The history does have some bit of instruction for us. The Minister indicated that one of the reasons why he was confident that Renato would win was because the PLP is the government. And I only wanted to remind him of a time when there was another election, right, in this country, and the PLP was the government, and an independent candidate ran in this same seat, won, Hubert Alexander Ingram, and won.
But I wouldn't want him to quote me. I didn't say Renato Curry will win because we are the government. I spoke specifically to what the people have told me going door to door, that they feel that the fact that he is a part of the government, that he can continue to provide them of service. Don't miss both of these.
I'm extremely happy for the clarification, because that wasn't the point he made at first. But I'm extremely happy for the clarification.
What was it you were referring to, Senator Lang?
I'm saying, the point was, that the point made was, one of the reasons why he was confident was that the PLP is the government, and Renato therefore would be a representative in the government. I'm saying, Abaco had an opportunity in an election to decide with the PLP in government to vote for an independent, and did so. And that independent one day became the Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. That's the point.
Let's go back to the comment that you made with regards to my position, my comment on the administration, the cabinet being here in Abaco. As a journalist and a recorder of history, I noted the moment to be a momentous moment for Abaco, an island who only 39 years ago wanted to remain under the crown. I thought the moment of the cabinet coming to Abaco certified Abaco as a part of a one Bahamas 39 years later. To have the first place the cabinet to sit is in Abaco, of course, in a facility built by your government, Mr. Lang. What do you have to say about that?
Again, I think your point is a little instructive, that no cabinet meeting was held here by ourselves prior to now.
Well, the building wasn't finished.
But no, but you don't have to have the building to have a cabinet meeting. This room is sufficient to hold a cabinet meeting. The cabinet meeting in which we sat is not as big as this room. So you can have a meeting of the cabinet in here if you wish, if that is your desire. But without the benefit of having a cabinet meeting here, the same building that held the cabinet meeting was constructed by a government. Without the benefit of a cabinet meeting being held here, the same many progress made, the hospital and clinics and schools, et cetera, all determinations made in Nassau for Abaco, as they were made for Exuma, Grand Bahama, Auckland, Crooked Island, et cetera. So again, I say, what matters more than where a cabinet meeting is held is the results of the meeting. This airport, right here in Marshaba, termination made in Nassau, result in Abaco.
Minister, Mr. Dorsett, at the rally on Saturday night, there was the comment, "If you do not support or return Renato, who can do things right now? You may expect to wait five years to get things done." What do you make of that?
Well, I'm not entirely sure that I heard that comment made by anyone who spoke at the rally, but I think that the Prime Minister made it very clear in his presentation that no matter who is elected on the 15th of October, that his administration is prepared to continue to serve the people of all of Abaco well. And I think that his speech also alluded to the fact that during 2002 to 2007, we did not have a candidate represented here, but he spoke to the jobs created and the programs that were advanced then, only to give instruction to the fact that no matter what happens on October 15th, he still intends to serve the interest of the people of Abaco.
What the Prime Minister did say at that rally was that Renato Curry can pick up the telephone and cause there to be, not tomorrow, today, urban renewal and preschools in North Abaco. George Cornish and Pastor Knowles, how do you feel about that?
Preschools and...
Urban renewal.
Well, I think urban renewal will do well in Abaco. We do need it. It provides assistance for our local government. Preschools, we have to be realistic. Abaco is growing. Women are having babies every day. Where do you put them? There's not enough private places for them to go. And if the government has to provide preschools for the kids when they are up to the age to go, then they should be provided. If he could do it now, so might it be.
I think that any move on the government of the Bahamas to better its people, whether it's through a social program or an educational program, ought to be done. And why wait for three years from now if need is present? If the government of the Bahamas today is in the position to move into North Abaco because it recognizes that there is a need for preschool or a need for a program that will be able to answer and effectively speak to the social problems of our community, then I say that the government ought to get up and do it. It's something that needs to be done.
Senator Lang, do you see it as a political ploy, an empty promise? Before you go, I'm not sure that they responded in the context to which you brought it. The Prime Minister said a Renato Curry can pick up the phone and make the call, as opposed to a Greg Gomez if he won. That's the context to which I understood you.
Indeed.
To make the call.
So are we saying if Mr. Gomez won and Mr. Curry didn't win, that that means that we have to wait five years before...
Did I misunderstand you or is that... Which leads us to this question I am now asking. Do you see it as a political ploy, an empty promise to win the seat?
Well, Mr. Miller, the only thing we can do now is sit and wait to see if that is the case. We cannot make a predicament on what he said until after the election. So if Mr. Gomez wins and we don't see it in the next year, then we know what it was. If Mr. Curry wins and it happens, we still know what it was.
But to your question, it's called political leveraging, okay? In the airs of the voters of North Abaco, they heard, "Get your mind, who could call me and make it happen? If a fellow who is not in the seat calls me, well..." But get your mind, who can call me and make it happen? It's political leveraging. I indicated before, we are politicians. Political things happen by politicians.
Minister Dorsett?
I think that it reflects the reality of politics. And the fact is, Renato Curry is obviously a PLP, and should he sit in the halls of Parliament as a member of Parliament, he has an established relationship with the Prime Minister and his cabinet colleagues. And so I only think that it speaks to that reality. But beyond that, I think that when it comes to the needs of the community of Abaco, the Minister of Education has already made public utterances that the preschools will come. October 15th is still a ways away. Those utterances have been made. The plans are already being put in place for the construction of the preschools. They will come, regardless of what happens on October 15th. Urban renewal, let me finish. Urban renewal will become a reality in Abaco, regardless of October 15th. The Progressive Liberal Party has made commitments. In the wake of a by-election, yes, no one can dispute that. But we are committed and resolved to carry out those promises, which we have committed ourselves to.
The political... Let me, just before you speak, Senator, let me say that there is a distinction between the Progressive Liberal Party and the government of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
Yes.
There is nothing in this year's budget for urban renewal in Abaco or preschools in Abaco. Are you spending too much and promising too much to win the seat?
No, I don't think so. And I think that the one thing that you would come to appreciate, particularly when it comes to urban renewal, is that there is a $15 million dollar line item that we put in our charter for governance to ensure that we are able to carry out the government's mandate. So there's no doubt in my mind that we have funds available to us to carry out our mandate with respect to urban renewal. Now, with respect to the construction of preschools, that fund is still available to it. We knew that when we debated the budget, that it wasn't our budget.
Hold that point. You're looking at the top of the list.
A $15 million line item is in the 2012, 2013 budget that was approved by this government.
All right. Hold your point. We gotta go. We're off to... We'll have to take a commercial break, but you don't want to touch that dial. It's just getting harder here in the town hall meeting, the Guardian and Cape Bahamas National Town Meeting held here in Abaco. Our panel here this evening, Minister Dorsett, Dave Ralph, Senator Lang, Chief Counselor Cornish, and Pastor Stephen Knowles. I'm Silven Mills along with Darrell Miller. We'll be right back. Welcome back to our National Town Hall Meeting being held here in Marsh Harbour, Abaco. Our panelists are Pastor Stephen Knowles, who is the President of the Abaco Christian Council, Chief Counselor for Central Abaco, George Cornish, Senator Chavago Lang of the Free National Movement, Dave Ralph of the Abaco Chamber of Commerce, and rounding out, our panel is the Minister of Environment and Housing, the Honorable Kenred Dorsett. And you are correct, sir. Urban renewal objectives are listed in the charter to be implemented through the local government framework in the family islands. You are correct. I, I knew you would respond, Senator Lang.
Yes, I, but I wanted, I wanted to make this point. On the, on the question of the Prime Minister's statement that Renado Curry could call him and say, "We need a preschool, we need X, Y, and Z." Minister Dorsett just indicated that Renado Curry is a PLP and that the PLP is in government. And so that matters. Let me give you some facts. One is, whether Renado Curry is MP or not, he's still a PLP. Whether he's MP or not, he has still a telephone. So he could call now and get these things done, right? Right? Tell me out.
With all due respect, sir, it is being done now.
This is precisely, no, this is precisely, but this is precisely my, this is precisely my point. This is precisely my point.
So imagine the possibilities when he is also a member of Parliament.
No. That, that, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize this point because the reverse is also true, that if there is not a PLP in the seat, then the progress which the F and M put here will stop and stop. That is also true. That is, that is precisely the implication. And you are the government of all the Bahamas, all the areas, every single one.
Are you saying, sir? Are you saying, sir?
I can tell you what I'm saying. I'm saying the express implications of what the Prime Minister said and what the Minister has sought to say tonight is that if you do not have a PLP in the seat, there's a possibility that the progress started can stop and that there are no progress to be made. That's the clear implication. That, that's my, that's my observation of it.
I think that the government of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas has made it very clear in the recent weeks that some of the progress that has been made by the former administration has been acknowledged and will be continued. The bridge that you all know of, that was advanced by the former administration, will be continued by the PLP. It makes sense and it is good for the people of North Abaco. Similarly, we have advanced, on October eleventh, urban renewal will be launched in North Abaco because it is good for the people of Abaco. We are the government of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas and we are the government of all the Hamians. So there's no doubt about it that North Abaco will be serviced and serviced well by this party, this government.
We are, we are delighted. We are delighted, Darrell Miller, Mr. Silven Mills. We are delighted to hear the government of the Bahamas say that on live television. We are delighted to hear it. We are delighted to hear it because we are hoping that what has happened in the past that contradicts what he said is going forward. We hope that is not the case.
Let me, this, this is leading us to the question of victimization. Chief Counselor. Oh, Chief Counselor. Is there any victimization in North Abaco?
You're asking my personal opinion on whether there's any victimization in Abaco. I have not heard of any. I don't know about any. If there is, I'm not privy to the information.
I want to go back to before...
Darrell, Darrell.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Mills.
Because...
We're speaking to a question raised. And it's a very serious and a very sensitive issue for too many people here in Abaco and across the country. It's a painful reality for too many people in Abaco and across the country. And I don't honestly, I honestly do not want to play politics with this, but I do say this much. Whether you believe it in reality or not, there are far too many people in this country and on this island today who fear for their freedom to express their choice without being so victimized. That fear is palpable. It is palpable in Abaco.
Minister Dorsett.
Yes.
Can you guarantee North Abaconians that they will be free from victimization?
There are no guarantees in life, Mr. Mills. No, no. And I, and I, and I, and I say this for this very specific reason. From what I have seen in my very short life on this earth with successive governments in place, victimization has taken place at the hand of all political parties who have governed this land. That's the first point that I want to make, but not to create excuses for a government. Sometimes victimization happens outside of the decision-making process and within agencies and offices without the politicos even being involved in the process. And so I think this is a very emotive issue. There are a lot of people who have been hurt throughout the length and breadth of this country as a result of it. I wish it would remove its face from the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, but you still have some people out there who, whether they wear red, yellow, or green, are still going to do things that they really ought not to do to their fellow brother and sister. And I think that for those of us who are on the front line of politics, we should be responsible and try to direct those whom we represent and who are a part of our organizations to ensure that they do not partake in that act which has caused pain to so many Hamians.
But let's, but let's be clear, though. Let's be clear. And I, I happen to, I happen to agree, I happen to agree with some of what the Minister said. But let's be clear, we are not talking about underlings who are creating this fear of victimization. That is not what we're talking about. Darrell, the only reason why I will not recount any number of stories that I heard right in this Abaco is that I do not wish further fear to fall upon those who gave me the stories.
So you...
I will not make them up.
So you have knowledge of victimization...
Oh, without question.
Here in North Abaco.
And where, and by whom some of those incidences have taken place, the threat? It, it is astounding. Astounding by whom they have taken place.
Pastor. Isn't this country too small for, isn't this country too small for either government to victimize? This country is too small, the families are, the families are intermingled.
But even in this community, cousin against cousin.
Yes.
Brother against brother. All right? And these are the stories that I'm hearing as I go door to door in North Abaco now. All right? But the reality is, Brother Mills, the reality is that victimization is wrong. The Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas has indicated that he does not tolerate that kind of action. And I, and I stand behind my leader. The fact of the matter is, I think that when we listen to the radio and we see political parties continuing to focus on that particular issue, making it a political platform, I think it only exacerbates this concern as to whether it will or will not happen. And when you speak about the fear of victimization, if you are going to have an ad, in my opinion, which continues to expand that fear, then you don't come into a place like this.
Then shouldn't you challenge them to produce...
No, but I am challenging that right now.
But you challenge them to...
You, you have made this a central plank...
Yes.
...of your campaign in North Abaco.
Then shouldn't you...
And then you come here and you speak to the fear of victimization.
Minister, Minister Lang.
But let's be, let's be, let's be clear. Let's be clear because it hasn't been a long time that the Minister has been sitting here. We didn't raise this issue. It was raised by yourselves to ourselves.
Yeah.
It was raised by...
No, sir. It has been raised by the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
Question, but I'm saying on tonight, you raised the question to us.
Yes.
Okay? We're responding to the question, but no leadership, no leader anywhere ignores the realities that confronts him on the ground or in the air. So if the people of North Abaco says to us that they are concerned about these threats to themselves regarding their jobs in government places or contracts in government places, what are we to do? Ignore those realities for them? Cannot happen.
But I hear the Minister, though, criticizing your ad, your advertisement.
And I, and I'm saying to you that if you are campaigning down here and you hear the concerns expressed down here, then you have a duty to respond to the concerns. After all, you are asking the concerned people to vote for you.
Well, let me talk about those concerns that I see from the people of North, North Abaco. There are a number of them on the fifty-two week program who have gainful employment now and who want to ensure that the government of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas is going to continue to advance measures to ensure that they can either continue or find gainful employment, to ensure that they can still take care of their families. The people of North Abaco want jobs. No, no.
But you, haven't you stopped it?
No, no.
But, but the Minister, the Minister responsible said on a public platform at a rally...
The former...
I determine, I determine. Why is that necessary to say to someone who is on that program? It is a program for fifty-two weeks.
For fifty-two weeks.
And the contract is fifty-two weeks.
And the contract...
And if you care about people like those who created the program, you'll think about what to do to extend it or to do something for them after the fifty-two weeks. You don't threaten them in the fifty-two weeks.
Well, but Mr. Miller, just to quote the former Prime Minister, the former Prime Minister, the outgoing member for North Abaco, made it very clear, when the fifty-two week program began, there was no intention, as far as he was concerned, to continue those contracts. Now, that is fact. Those are the words of Mr. Ingram, not mine. That is what he said and that was printed. But the fact, but the fact remains, the people of North Abaco want and need jobs. The people of North Abaco want economic opportunities for their families so they don't have to leave Abaco and go to Nassau or elsewhere. That is why the Progressive Liberal Party is in, is in talks with investors for new touristic developments has been spoken about by the Prime Minister. That is why in my ministry, we are advancing a forestry program to provide new green jobs in Abaco. That is why there is a mariculture project, which Minister V. Alfred Gray just recently spoke about, which will, which will create additional jobs for the people of Abaco. So see, no matter what, a government can look at a fifty-two week program, knowing when these contracts are going to come to an end. But our obligation is to create the opportunities to ensure that whether those contracts are extended or not, there are opportunities for those same people to continue to be gainfully employed in the land of their birth.
And while, and while, and while, and while the grass is growing, and, and while the grass is growing, the cows are starving. Here's the reality. Circumstances produced, circumstances demanded that we do something for these people. So we created a fifty-two week program. He's right, it's a fifty-two week program. At the end of it, it's fifty-two weeks. The reality is, do the circumstances that prompted the creation of the fifty-two weeks now prevail? Well, if they now prevail, at the, when many of these people have already gone home. So the investment jobs that he's, that Minister's talking about, the green jobs that the Minister's talking about are not now here. But those people are out of income. And I assure you, when you are unemployed, your bills do not stop coming. The rent still has to be paid. The groceries still has to be paid. And the, and the mortgage and the like has to still be paid. The question for them was, what are you going to do now? That's the question. Now.
Minister, is the fifty-two week program going to continue? What, what will you say to those that are on the fifty-two week program? It's over or was it in the budget for...
There was no budget. As we all know, the program was a twenty-five million dollar program which was approved by Parliament. It was extended without reference to Parliament to forty-eight million dollars by the former administration. And there was no provision in the budget to extend it beyond its current term. But, but that is factual.
But let's be clear, but let's, but let's, no.
There is no budgetary, to answer your question. There is no budgetary provision to extend the program. That is the reality.
But let's be clear, let's be clear, let's be clear on something. First of all, first of all, the budget of the Bahamas is flexible enough for you to reallocate resources within the budget if you so desire.
Minister.
Okay. Listen to me, listen, listen to me. Secondly...
As a former minister, come on.
Former, former minister, sorry. Please, don't, don't say that.
Mr. Miller, you, you...
Are you saying it's okay to take from Peter and give to Paul?
Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller. With the greatest, with the greatest respect to you, sir, with the greatest respect to you, sir. I functioned in the Ministry of Finance for ages immemorial. This is what you can do. This is basic budgeting and it has to happen. I assure you, it will happen in this same administration. It is happening even now. Because if, if the items which they are announcing now were not announced in the budget, by what means will they be funded? The fifteen million dollars of which they spoke cannot and will not fund all the things that they will seek to do in the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. This is standard. And the fifty-two week program, they knew would come to an end when they came to office and made and prepared for the budget. So all it was a matter of choice. If you wanted to extend it, you could have made allocation for it. There is a five hundred and fifty million dollar deficit...
Correct.
...that will be funded this year.
Yes.
They could very easily have determined, I guess what? We cut one ministry and keep ten employed over fifty-two weeks.
Well, I'm glad that he highlighted the fact that if we did not have the half a billion dollar deficit which laid on our doorstep when we became the government, we probably could have done a lot more than we are able to do now. And so I'm glad that the Minister is taking responsibility for that.
That may, that's, that's interesting. That, that's very interesting. That's very interesting. We left, we left, we left a situation so stark that they were... that they were able to follow a $504 million deficit with a $550 million deficit. But where the money coming from? Come on, man, please. How do you hire the biggest cabinet in the history of the Bahamas unbroken? How does that happen? How do you fly that big cabinet to Abaco unbroken? How do you fly to California two ministers, the Deputy Prime Minister and Foreign Affairs Minister, to California to give a blackout unbroken? How does that happen? How does that happen?
Let's get back, I want to focus back on the local election. I'd like to get back to North Abaco. Okay, thank you. We'd like to get back to North Abaco.
The question, though, Gilbert Mills, really is, if there were no by-election, would you have been spending what you say you're going to spend?
Yes.
Go ahead, Gilbert.
Let's get back.
Absolutely.
Let's get back to...
Absolutely.
Let's get back to the by-election. I want to bring back to the by-election. At Mr. Ingram's departure, he said that the Free National Movement had $1 million in debt that they needed to raise. The Progressive Liberal Party is funded well for this by-election.
We are?
Isn't this costing both of you more than you could handle?
Well, the reality is, whatever the cost to us to get the message to the people of North Abaco that we need in respect of our candidate, whatever that cost and whatever we have, we will use as efficiently and as effectively as we can.
And you'll find it's been extraordinary expensive exercise?
Well, I think that all elections are. And so for us, you know, we are not a wealthy party. But we have a lot of supporters who are assisting us to ensure that the campaign expenses are defrayed as best as possible.
We have lots of money, lots of money. They have lots of money.
He's saying you have a lot of money.
Well, you know, the FNM has accused us of having, suggested that we have a lot of money for years. On the one hand, they tell us we can't pay our bills to broadcast in cooperation. Then on the other hand, they tell us we rich. You know, so at the end of the day, who knows what it is? But the reality is...
But what do you think?
You got lots of money, you just don't face that mess.
Let's go to a break. Let's go to a break. This is our national town hall meeting, live from Marsh Harbour, Abaco. We'll be back right after these messages. Welcome back to our national town hall meeting, being held here in Marsh Harbour, Abaco. Our panelists are the pastor, Stephen Knowles, who is the president of the Abaco Christian Council, the chief counselor for Central Abaco, George Cornish, Senator Chavago Lang of the Free National Movement, Dave Ralph of the Abaco Chamber of Commerce, and the Minister of Environment and Housing, the Honorable Kenred Dorset. The October 15th by-election has been the focus thus far. There are other issues facing the Abacos. Unless we think that there are only two candidates in the race, there is a third candidate, Ali Macintosh, and we are happy to have you in our audience. Ali Macintosh is from the Bahamas Constitution Party. And just in the way of welcome, say a few words to us, please.
Well, what is interesting, Daryl, and in governance by women. And as I look at this distinguished panel, the 17% represented by women is obviously absent from this table. It is the same respect that we use to respect each other. And it is amazing that this panel have not once referred to the fact that there are three candidates in this race. And I do think that if we are going to get to a point in this nation where we are going to respect each other and grow, we're going to have to start there. I have been sitting in this room from 8 o'clock, and they have not thought to do so. And I do believe that if we are going to grow in this nation, if we're going to get to the next level, we must get there first.
Thank you very much, Ali Macintosh, and good luck.
Well, Mr. Miller, let me be the first to apologize, ma'am, for having not so acknowledged. And so let me do so now, the third candidate, Ali Macintosh. My apologies, ma'am.
Does anyone else wish to apologize?
Mr. Miller, I think you've snubbed Miss Macintosh.
I did not, sir.
I don't think we need to snub her. I think she needs to take a seat where there's an empty...
No, 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 no!
But that's all right.
No, I will tell you why.
We don't have candidates.
We don't have any candidate.
And we don't want her at the table, okay?
But she has a very prominent seat, and once again, we thank you very much.
And so...
Shall we move to...
You're a body representative?
I saw a couple of web shops as I came in. Shall we move to gambling? Let us move to gambling, we will come back to politics.
But gambling is politics right now. You can't separate that now.
Pastor Stephen Knowles. What has Abaco come to? People are moving in and out of island lock and ASU draw without impunity, not even hanging their heads in shame.
There was a time, there was a time in the Bahamas when the majority of people considered such things as nude dancing, junketness, cursing, and gambling to be wrong. We have a national problem in our country. And of course, the Christian Council has its position. And as we move forward, I would be obliged to share.
You have to share it now, sir.
The Christian Council in Abaco stands against all forms of gambling. We don't support it. We believe that it, in the long run, is going to hurt us as a nation. And in particular, here at Abaco, we are beginning to see, even as I pass, I see young men who should be on the job, working. I see young men and women standing at the door all day, waiting to see if their number would fall. I see parents parking their cars across the street, sending their schoolchildren in their regular clothes to go into the number place to take the number. I see all kinds of people...
From the church, church followers.
From, 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 from the, straight across the island of Abaco, participating. And it is sad. It is sad because just the idea to be discussing a referendum on gambling in a Christian nation saddens my heart. And as I stand to see what we are coming to as a people, it is frightening, Daryl. Quickly, though, if I may, allow me to say that it is evident in our society to that many people no longer care about what God thinks or what the Bible teaches. But I do. Because there is a God in heaven who has given His holy word. And personally, I've made a vow to preach the whole Council of God, which is designed to govern human behavior. So as we address this issue of gambling, the question is, what is gambling? Gambling originated from an old English word called gammon, the basic concept of a game. It is based on chance. Without skill or personal involvement, it is not like normal competition in which you strive for a prize by producing something better, by accomplishing something sooner, or by doing something more effectively, or efficiently, rather, in hope of winning something of greater value. A person risks something for value to the force of chance beyond his or her control or rational expectation. Gambling is accompanied by the notion that the longer you engage in it, the better your odds of succeeding. But the truth is shared, that the truth is, it's nothing more than chance. It never changes its odds because there are no elements you can control to increase your likelihood of winning.
Let me ask Dave Ralph of the Chamber of Commerce. Are you seeing any debilitating effects on the labor force, on the productivity, based on gambling? That's what I hear pastor suggesting. The guys are standing at the door all day. Are you seeing a fall off in work ethic?
That strikes me as more of a social issue than a business issue. I'm not sure that the chamber has any observation on the social impact of this. I understand the issue very well. As a business community, the shops are on every street corner, they're accepted. They don't pay taxes as other businesses do. I'm not sure how to answer your question from a business standpoint. It's a social issue that is being discussed at the other end of the table.
But isn't this commerce, Mr. Ralph?
It's a business. If you were asked the chamber, I think we would say tax it, regulate it, put the paper on the wall that said we approve of it, and let it go on. It's a fact of life, it's there. It's not being shut down, it's not being stopped, it's not being controlled in any way, it's accepted.
Have you seen, like I've seen around this island, that this is the one thing where people of all colors, cultures, political divide, come and assemble and get along well at these places? Doesn't matter your politics when you go there, doesn't matter your color...
Or your church.
Or your church, or whether you speak broken English or no English at all. Isn't that dangerous for this community?
Well, I certainly can't speak to it because I don't frequent those places. But I think that the one thing that I want to make very clear as we deal with this issue of gambling and its legality or illegality. Gambling in the Bahamas is not illegal. There is a regulatory framework which provides licensing for certain gambling activities for non-Bahamians in casinos. And when it comes to games of chance, whether it is the scratch and win that you see McDonald's provide, whether it is the raffles provided by churches, there is a regulatory framework to have those games of chance approved. But the reality is, there are other operations in our midst which are matters that I believe have to be dealt with in a succinct way. And I believe that the referendum that we intend to hold gives this country an opportunity to determine whether it is an activity we are going to accept or it's an activity that we will not. And so after the referendum is held, if it is an activity that we are not going to accept, you shut them down. Let's avoid the hypocrisy moving forward.
Why wait? Why not shut them down now?
Because we have committed to putting the issue by way of referendum to the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
That does not approve it now.
But the reality is, Mr. Miller, you asked, I have said, when it comes to that activity in our charter for governance, we have indicated that a referendum will be held on the issue.
Mr. Miller...
The word I use is impunity. It's not, go ahead.
And I think that I am in total agreement with what Minister Dorset said up to the point of the referendum. I want to add to it, and it's consistent with what you are saying. What has happened in the numbers business in the Bahamas, and what is happening now, is an absolute failure of leadership on the part of every administration of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, ours included. Okay, I take no umbrage, I take no pains, no pains to say that. This is true. Today, gambling is illegal. And I want you to listen to what we are saying, listen to what we are saying. If you observed a man stabbing another man, what would you do?
Call the police.
Call the police. If you observed someone stealing from someone else, what would you do?
Call the police.
In other words, there is a duty on the part of responsible citizens where they see illegal activity to report the activity. Each of us says, I see them going into the numbers place. There's no report. The police will drive past the numbers place. No report. This issue for us is an absolute failure of leadership. And let me tell you why I believe that this referendum is flawed in this way. To the extent that the numbers man gets to have more liberty now in the face of a question being put, is an affront to legality in the Bahamas totally. Because it is still illegal. And this illegal man is now able to flaunt his wares to the public in a campaign.
Meaning make donations to political campaigns?
Whether it's donations, or he gets to put an ad on the radio to say, listen, vote yes, et cetera, et cetera. We are doing these things and we are saying, the question has not yet been put. You know what, in the House of Assembly, if you don't put the question, the law ain't passed. Therefore, there is no law.
But let's not bury our head in the sand.
My point is, Minister, is that we have been burying our heads in the sand on this issue.
And finally, we have a government that is prepared to address the issue.
No, we do not.
That is the reality.
We do not.
No matter how you look at it. See, I don't want to give the impression that I hold any brief for it. Because the reality is, as a Christian, I don't believe in it.
So you're going to vote no?
But no, but listen to me, I represent, no, listen to me, I represent a people in a constituency. When I ask them about this issue, there are those in my constituency who say yea, there are those in my constituency who say nay. I am a representative of the people of southern shores. And so I tell them what my personal views on the matter is. But I would not be a responsible representative if I don't listen to what they are saying.
But all due respect, your votes are in the referendum is between you and your God.
Correct, but the point that I make is, because it is a referendum, they now have the opportunity, regardless of what I feel, to cast their vote and make a decision as to whether or not, for Christian principles, they will vote against it, for social reasons, they will vote against it, or whether it is something that they want. And I think it is a matter that should be put to the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller...
This baffles me as a businessman.
The putting of the question to people is not the issue here at all solely. As a government, they are determining to do that. As a government, they are determining to do that. No problem. But the government of the Bahamas has a first duty, which is to uphold the law. That it is its job. That is its job. And so I'm saying that on this score, there has been absolute failure. But what is now happening is an escalation and a flaunting of this illegality with impunity, as you put it. And I think that that is dangerous in the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
I want to ask Chief Counselor George Cornish.
Let me, let me get in this.
But let me just make this point.
Yes.
At the end of the day, this is one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that we did some things to ensure that the independence of the police was well preserved when we came to Parliament, had we made some changes to the Police Act. I make this point very clear. We do not stop the Commissioner of the Police in carrying out his responsibilities and that of his police force. The law is the law, and the police is there to enforce that law.
And what happens if they do not enforce the law? Then you have a responsibility.
As a government?
Of course.
A minister, a minister today, a minister today who thought that a vehicle owned by the government of the Bahamas was being used by a person who was not now employed for the government of the Bahamas was issuing instructions to the police in respect of what to do.
I know not what he speaks of.
Let me get back, let's get back to the issue. Can we get back to the issue? What baffles me, Chief Counselor, Chief Counselor Cornish, what baffles me that if I want to make bread, I gotta get a license. I can't go out and start a shop. If I want to sell tires, I have to come and make application. Who's issuing these licenses if they're not legal to issue? Chief Counselor, because it's your district.
Mr. Mills, in our local government conference, one of the things that we agitated to the minister that he must present to Parliament on behalf of the local government concerts throughout the Bahamas is that the government of this country brings the license, business license back to the local government. Because what you have is people getting licensed all through these communities without the local government authorities having any say in the matter. And I think that's absolutely wrong. When the government was about to do this, we said no. Leave it in the hands of the local people. We'll say yea or nay. But they took it from us, and now we're agitating the new government to bring it back to the local people.
Is it conceivable then that even though the referendum may pass, Abaco may not have any web shops? Is that conceivable?
Mr. Miller, the thing about it is, I was glad to hear Mr. Dorsett say that if, in the referendum, that the people votes against it, that they will close the web shops down. I was, my personal opinion is that I think that the, that the government was not willing to close them down. Or if the people that says no, I think that they still wasn't gonna close them down. But he has confirmed that if the referendum says no, that they're gonna close all of them down. I personally don't think that's gonna happen.
But two things to this, to this point, though. One of the arguments that has been made by governments of the Bahamas is that the reason why we are going to try to put this to referendum is because notwithstanding what the law says, we can't enforce it. Because people will continue to gamble. That is, has been the argument. I am now being told, we are now being told, if you say no, we will, we will shut it down. Which means the ability exists
Is there.
to do so.
Yes.
But the argument is, we, we're looking to ask the people to say yes to this or no to this, because we don't, we can't enforce it.
But the reality is, just as, just as former Minister Lang has said, successive governments have not dealt with these issues. You now have a government that is saying, we are going to deal with it. The hypocrisy is rife, and we all know this. And so you have a government in place that is prepared to tackle the tough issues and deal with the tough issues. And stop rushing these things under the rug.
If that is true.
And that is what this PLP government is going to do.
If that, if that is true, if that is true, if that is true, why if the government doesn't tell the Commissioner how to do his job? Why if the people say no, will the government now shut it down? How is that possible? Remember now, the Commissioner has a responsibility to enforce the law. He can, it is illegal today. It is not happening today. The minister said, if the people says no, then we will, we will shut it down. Not the Commissioner. We will shut it down. What new powers, what new abilities will come to the minister and his government after a no vote that he does not now have?
Well, as, as the Commissioner so eloquently stated, the same, admitted the same agency that fell under your purview as Minister for Finance that issued the business licenses to the same operations that he is now complaining about. This government, should the people say no, can revoke, cancel, and take back.
No, no, no problem. But, but let me, let me let the minister, let me inform the minister of the law.
We want to bring.
And this is to speak to the point that was made.
Yes.
The numbers man doesn't apply to do numbers. It is not illegal to have an internet cafe in the Bahamas. Just like, just like, just like people apply to have a restaurant and bar and then do illegal things like dealing drugs, et cetera. So the numbers man applies for an internet cafe. It is not illegal to have an internet cafe in the Bahamas. And when he discloses his income, he disclosed it in respect to his internet cafe. And I assure you, he does not disclose all of his money. And just like we have no obligation, we have no right, except for suspicion, to go behind a man's disclosure, then we have no right to do something for the internet cafe.
You know there ain't no internet cafe in the web shop.
Listen, listen, listen.
You know, Sooty, you can spin, you know there ain't no internet cafe.
Listen to me. Carol, the reality is,
As I said, you have a government that is prepared to deal with this issue and resolve it once and for all.
This has been a failure on the part of administrations. But this much remains true, though. We now have a minister who says his government is prepared to do something about it. Well, there's something is illegal today.
We have to take a break, Minister Dorsett and Senator Lang, Mr. Ralph, Chief Counselor Cornish and Pastor Knowles. But after we return from the break, after we return from the break, there are, the white man, businessman, isn't in the number business. This is being controlled by black Bahamians now. You legalize it. You see a shift? We'll talk about that when we come back.
And, and when we come back, when we come back. Welcome back to our very exciting town hall meeting here in Marsh Harbor, Abaco. Our panelists are Pastor Stephen Knowles, President of the Abaco Christian Council, George Cornish, the Chief Counselor for Central Abaco, Senator Shavago Lang of the Free National Movement, Dave Ralph of the Abaco Chamber of Commerce, and the Minister of the Environment and Housing, the Honorable Kenred Dorsett. We now invite members of our audience to participate in our discussion. We invite you now to approach the microphone and ask your questions. Be brief, be respectful. If you are not, we will have to cut you. So identify yourself if you wish and ask your question, sir, please.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody in this room pretty much know me in Abaco. I'm Jackson Tinker. It's my good cousin, good old cousin, yeah. It's another thinker. But listen, I'm getting brief. Mr. Shavago Lang, this is to you, just for a brief moment, sir. Former minister, I must pay my respects, former minister. You talk about victimization. But I was one who was fired two weeks after the election in 2007 from housing. Please be quiet. Let me, let me, let me make my point. I was at housing, Ms. Winita Reckley, who's in this room tonight, was dismissed after the election of 2007 because we supported the PLP. Listen, good. Mr. Miller asked me to be respectful, and I'm doing just that. You come here tonight with, and I don't know whenever you have visited Abaco, but I'm one who built the government building. I bought the government building out of the ground. We bought the building from 20 feet out of the ground, two stories below the ground where it is today. I built it. Listen, good. Because of the cavities that were in the ground, there where the building stands today. I built it. No one, whoever in this room who built it with me, please stand up and correct me if you were there. We used everything imaginable to make that building stand where it is today. Everything imaginable. In 2010 and 11, we used everything imaginable to make that building stand where it is today. Listen to me again. I was the one, I was the Bahamian, right there, four generations deep. You know something, Minister? I'm not knocking you. But the man who led you made those decisions to make sure that it was built there. You see, we're Bahamians, and it's our money. And my question to you is, you was part of that organization in the Ministry of Finance. You didn't stand up and speak for Bahamians when we were building a building in a hole 20 feet deep in Abaco, where now the cavities are, listen to me, good. I tell my wife, don't go there to pay your bills. Pay it from far, because it may just collapse. Because I saw the destruction of what's coming. Listen to me, good.
What is the question, sir?
My question to you is, how do we?
Let's open it up.
What is the question? My question is this. You come here tonight talking about victimization, but I was one who was victimized. You come here talking about what the PLP has not done. So if we vote for Greg Gomez, so to speak, what could he do in North Abaco to make it better? Thank you.
First of all, first of all, I, I spoke to the concerns that North Abaconians are expressing to us. Okay? If you want me to do something different, I, I, I can't do something different. Secondly, secondly, the responsibility for the construction of sound buildings in the Commonwealth of the Bahamas are not yours. It is the Department of Public Works and their inspectors, according to the building codes of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. And I'm stunned, stunned and shocked that an Abaconian would stand up in here and say he built this unsound building and tell his wife not to go in this unsound building, notwithstanding that there are other Abaconians who work and would use the building. Now, if the Ministry of Public Works has those fears, then we really have a problem on our hands. As far as I am aware, as far as I am aware, the building of, of buildings or on, in areas where there are cavities is not the issue. It's what you do about the cavities that's the issue. And making sure that it's sound, the foundation is sound, is the responsibility of the Department of Public Works. And if, as he says, he was victimized, if that's what he says, that's his story. If it happened, it's wrong. If it happened, it's wrong. That doesn't help me to ignore what Abaconians are saying to us now.
If I, if I may, let me, I need to clarify something, because I think, I don't want people to get the wrong concept of what I said about the victimization. If people have been victimized, you ask me the question, if I know. Personally, I do not know. There are rumors. I don't go on rumors. If I know the facts, I would say, yes, I do know. I can't tell you something I do not know.
So you didn't know the gentleman was fired?
No, this was back in 2007.
You weren't here.
I was here, but I'm, you were talking about what was going on now. I know about his situation because he's my friend, and he spoke to me about what had happened to him and, and a couple others back in 2007. Now, the reason for him being let go, I do not know. I only can tell you what he said to me. Most of the time when people are let go, they get a letter. I have been seeing the letters that they, they got, so I don't know what the circumstances of the situation is. I cannot speak to that.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, distinguished panel. My name is Jonathan Johnson. I'm a native of Dunstan. I have a question for Mr. Dorsett and Mr. Stephen Knowles, who's a pastor, understand?
Go ahead.
Mr. Stephen Knowles, the Bahamas is a Christian nation as far as we know, and we do believe in godly principle. All due respect, now I'm about to go to Mr. Dorsett on this gambling issue. Mr. Dorsett, on this gambling issue, as a young man growing up, we, we grew up on godly principle. How could your government tell the people of the Bahamas that we are going to put this gambling referendum to the people? Because we all know they doing it under the table. So to me, the best way to get this legalized, and we know the people can legalize it because they doing it under the table. If I want something done, I would give it to someone. If I have a secret, I would tell someone who I want to talk it, I would give them the secret so that they can talk it. Now, you know, if we give this to the people, they doing it under the table, they will legalize it. There's no question about that. We all know, if we give something such as gambling to the people, if they doing it under the table, they will legalize it. We don't have to second guess that, because we know that's what's going to happen. We give them something that we know that they can legalize. And then we can tell the people all, we put it to the people. So if, if we have repercussions from this, or we can say, the people, the people, this is what the people want, and this what we give to the people. But we know the people can legalize it because they doing it under the table. So to you, I wonder, what is the response when this, this legalizing of gamble, legalizing of gambling, you have the repercussions? What are the government prepared to do? Because they know that it's going to happen. The best way to take it off the government is to give it to the people. So.
I'll get your question.
I'm not entirely sure what the question is, but, but the reality.
Let me, let me help him. Are you passing debacle by putting it on the people and not on yourself?
I think that the end of the day, we are a government by the people, for the people. And as I said before, we are putting the question to the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
But you need not.
Let, let me finish, Mr. Miller. The gentleman presumes that the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas will vote to legalize this. I, I, I really don't share that particular view that you have. But the fact remains is, I think that it's well worth the effort of putting the question to the citizens for us to make a determination as to where they really stand. I don't believe in guessing. I don't think that we should guess as to what the people believe. The referendum will give us a definitive position as to what the people of this great Commonwealth believe. And if we are a Christian nation as the Constitution speaks of, then I would presuppose that we may vote against it. Even though I understand that some churches are even divided on this issue. But the bottom line is this, the people of this country have an opportunity to speak up and make a decision on this. And I think that we should allow the people to speak.
Minister, Minister, you said, you said that gambling is legal. That is what you said.
I said, some forms of gambling are legal. You have casinos.
Right.
Casinos are operating legally.
And you also mentioned games of chance.
McDonald's goes to the gaming board for an approval for a scratch and win card, because the law requires them to do so.
So the question is, do you really need a referendum?
I think we do. I think we do.
I personally believe the referendum was decided on May 7th.
I don't think so.
That's my.
Yeah, I, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Bahamas. My name is Edgbert Tinker. My name is Edgbert Tinko. Minister Dorsett.
Yes, sir.
You said a little while about that there is now in place a government who is not prepared to put its head in the sand and to deal with the issue at hand. I want to know, why is it that your government don't just make an act of parliament, saying that you have an overwhelming majority, saying that the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas resoundingly rejected the former government, elected the PLP on the 7th of May 2012, to make decisions to rule and to govern us as a people and represent us in that honorable House of Assembly? Why is it that the PLP government and Mr. Perry Christie don't just make an act of parliament instead of trying to pass the buck on to the people? There is a provision in the law where this could be done by the stroke of a pen. Do you agree?
Whether or not the provision exists, when we campaigned during the recent general election, and as is reflected in that charter for governance, which is what the people of the Bahamas voted for, we said, the matter will be put to the people by referendum. So what would it be now for me to break that promise, go into House of Assembly and just pass a law? I, we made a commitment to put it to the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and that is what we're going to do.
I, I, I asked you, sir.
It's a simple matter.
Yes, sir, I understand all that, but I asked you, sir, is there, are you aware that there are provisions in the law right now, tomorrow?
I'm not aware.
You're not aware?
I'm not aware.
Okay, but I can tell you, there is.
But, Mr. Tinko.
There is a provision.
But, Mr. Tinko, if I might be helpful?
Yes, sir.
The reality is that if a referendum is held and the people say yes, it will no, it will not be legal until these good gentlemen in the House of Assembly and those of us in the Senate pass a law, which they must bring and they have to vote on. So, whether that is a amending, and you're right, the current law, gambling laws can be amended to make this possible. That's a fact. But, but I understand the notion of a referendum, so that doesn't bother me as much. Let me tell you what does bother me. The Prime Minister says that his government will not take a position on this gambling. No position. Yet, the Prime Minister of the Bahamas went and got consultants to speak to them about a national lottery. A national lottery is gambling, okay? And is, is a gambling form not like we have now legalized in the country. How do you have a position, no position, on gambling in respect to numbers, but you have a position in respect of inviting consultants to talk to you about national lottery? To me, that's contradictory.
Thank you very much. You had a follow-up?
Yes, sir, I have a follow-up. I, I want the government to, to take responsibility for this. I don't want them to give this to the people, to my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren, because us now, we won't pay, but they will pay.
Thank you. Next question.
Hold, hold the question just for a minute.
You have a question, Mr. Miller?
Okay, very good.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Hi, good night. My name is Shida Avinia. I'm a constituent of the Dundas Town that follows in North Abaco constituency, where the candidates are now running for the seat. My question is to Mr. Dorsett.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ingram and the previous administration have put up the administration building that's now all doing Dundas Town. They have built the hospital and the harbor. Okay. Mr. Christie and his new administration has said, Abaco has had enough. So how would you guys follow up on this and complete it with Mr. Ingram has already put in place?
Sorry?
Sorry?
I'm not sure, but...
Okay, my question is to you.
No, because I, I want to make, what are we not completing? I, I mean, where did you get this information from? I mean, the, the clinic is there, the works are ongoing. I mean, the building is being completed. I'm, I'm not sure where you get this, this notion that we're not going to complete the works.
Okay.
The government complex has been built, we are occupying it, we just had a cabinet meeting in it. These things have been built by the monies of the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
I agree.
Okay?
I agree.
And so we've been utilizing them. Mr. Christie made it very clear to the people of North Abaco on Saturday that continued infrastructural works will be done in North Abaco as well as in South Abaco. And so this notion that the progressive Liberal Party for some reason is not going to continue works that are already in progress is nonsense, all right? And I think he dealt with that, all right, on Saturday, when he made it very, very clear to the people of North Abaco, that so that some of these works are going to be continued.
Okay.
Is, is the treasury in the building?
No, it's the post office in the building. It's the post office in the building.
It's the post office in the building?
No. That's my point.
The building was built.
No.
The building, the building was built. The building was built for several, the building was built for several government agencies. The building was built for several government agencies. There are a number, in particular the treasury, of agencies that are not now in the building. They now occupy premises of prominent people, but they are not now in the building.
No.
These are the people's money still.
Yes.
No, it is still the people's money, and I think one of the harsh realities that we came to realize is that beautiful complex was constructed, but it does not have facilities for the police. And we wanted to make sure that we have a police, significant police presence there before the treasury is moved, to protect the people's money. Thank you very much.
But with the, with the greatest respect, with the greatest respect, with the greatest respect, if the cabinet of the Pa, if the cabinet of the Bahamas can occupy that building for a meeting that has the Prime Minister, the head of the government in it and others, and security provisions can be made for that occupancy, cannot be made for the treasury to be made to be in that building?
But, ma'am, the reality is, the government of the Bahamas is using the building.
All right, as the host...
We understand.
We're in there.
We understand.
We're in there.
We understand.
Next question, please.
Who wants to build in the treasury end?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Man, y'all fighting already, and we ain't even start yet. My question is, Chavago Lang, Minister Chavago Lang. The government of the Bahamas, no matter which party win, is the government. Am I correct? If the F and M win the seat, they are the government. If the PLP win the seat, they are the government of the Bahamas, no matter which way it goes.
You're not saying that correctly.
I'm, I'm not saying, oh, how should I say it, sir? If the PLP...
PLP is the government and will remain the government for the next four and a half years.
If the F and M win after five years, they are the government for four years or five years. Am I correct?
Oh, for four and a half years.
Right. So what I'm saying to you is that you speak about the PLP using, the F and M build this and the PLP is in this, and the PLP and the F and M build the administrative building or the, the, what the building down there? Yeah, provincial center or whatever they build.
Government complex.
The government complex. Whoever build a government complex and the government of that candidate is in the seat has no explanation for the other government that falls. In other words, if a government lose and they have a car that's worth a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, any government can use that car, because there's no law to that government who lost.
True.
So, the building that the F and M say they build, the PLP is the government, man, what's wrong with you? They have facility, they can use that. That's government, that's not your money, that's not their money, that's the people money.
You're right. You're right.
But with the greatest respect, Darrell. Darrell, with the, Darrell, with the great, with the greatest, with the greatest respect, with the greatest respect, with the greatest respect. All that passion, all that passion, all that passion speaks nothing to the point that I made. All that passion speaks nothing to the point I made, because I never made the point that the government can't use the building. What I did say was, a government cabinet seated in Nassau made the decision, decision to build the building whole house in Abaco where, which was used by this cabinet. That's all I said. That's all I said.
All right, that's my question. Come on with your question, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Distinguished guest, the panel, and to everybody here this evening, good evening. My name is Billipper Roel Curry, and I'm from the wonderful island of Grand Bahama. Every year, I come to, to Abaco to show respect to my loving, dead husband. He just celebrated two years, September 17th. On my topic tonight, I will address it to Mr. Dorsett, because I listened to the rally in Freeport on Saturday night, and Mr. Honorable Mr. Perry G. Christie, which is the Prime Minister, said that victimization is not his interest. Well, I would like to ask the question, victimization is a form of a person working for any, it don't have to just be a government, it could be any establishment. And you have been sent home with a letter, I mean, and suddenly, my husband, he's now deceased, the job for B A I C was the First Office Manager in Freeport, it was put in the Freeport News, The Guardian, and The Tribune. It was not a job of an appointee by the government. He applied, he was called into an interview in Nassau, and he was successful and awarded the job, was doing well, just had a seminar with fifty persons. Y'all won the government, which is now the present government, Mr. Christie and his cabinet and his, um, um, party in 2002. Early 2003, my husband was doing a fine job, the government also praised him, the persons in Freeport praised him. He just had a seminar the weekend. The early the next week, someone came from Nassau, gave him, talked to him that morning at noon, gave him a letter, said, oh, by the way, I was told to give you this letter, and he left. When my husband opened the letter, in it, and I mean, it just had to been premeditated, it was a letter of dismissal and his final paycheck. Right on the spot, my husband had a slight heart attack. My husband called me, said, hon, come, come quickly, is what happened. He said that you need to come quickly. I break off running. I went to the B A I C office that was in the present National Insurance Building in Freeport. I met my husband staring across the room, tapping on the envelope. I opened the envelope, and I found what I just said was in the envelope. I held him, I prayed, I escorted him out, and I said, I have to take you to the round. He said, no, I don't want the news get out. So we went home, and I walk him to the beach. So I am saying to you, my husband had worse from having that heart attack, enlarged heart, leaking valve, blockages, shortness of breath. And then the hurricane came in 2004 and 2005.
Your husband's name is?
My husband was Pastor Michael Lucian Curry, Renato's father. You understand? So, it got so bad, my husband, it got so bad.
Did you say, I'm sorry, did you say he's the father of Renato Curry, who's now running for the PLB?
Yes. Who is encouraging, and he is encouraging victimization and wrongdoing. I still remains to say, it got so bad, he were not able to take care of himself. I had to keep leaving jobs to take care of him. I moved to Abaco with him. He said, honey, we gotta go to Abaco. My husband been away from here, he born here. He move away from here for forty years, in Freeport, forty years. My husband brought me here to Abaco from 2008 to 2010. You understand that he died? I moved back to Freeport in 2011. And you can tell me, your government do not know what's going on in this cabinet? I guess you don't, because if you don't know that this man was victimized, and your governor said, your governor said, my husband asked the question, why was he victimized? My husband asked the question, why was he victimized? He was told that the former government, which was the F and M, did not leave enough, did not left enough capital. Well, if you didn't leave, if they didn't left enough capital, in three weeks to four weeks, the, the, the PLP turned around and hired three persons in the same office, the office manager, the assistant manager, and another employee.
Your, your story is very, very powerful. Let, let the minister see if he could address it. But Darrell...
But I just, I, it's something else. I, I went home.
Darrell, Darrell, I, I think it's, I think it's... I think it's unfair. I think it's unfair to say that Renato is encouraging victimization. I, I think that's unfair to say that. I think that's unfair.
Let me say why.
I think that's unfair.
Let me say why. Let me say why. Let me say why. I listen to all the rallies, I listen to talk shows and speech, I listen to talk shows and speeches. I have not heard Renato. Mr., um, Mr. Thompson, Dean Thompson is calling for Renato to come to the, to the, to the microphone and to call into his talk show on the topic victimization. Renato hasn't called yet. I've been listening, I've been listening to all the stuff. He would hear people talking about victimization. He would be on stage and clapping and laughing and enjoying what has been said about the F and M man, calling him dumb, disrespecting him, downgrading him, and he is a Christian, don't supposed to stand for that. He said, mom, I going to run to make the difference. But my son, you're not making the difference. You got to stand up. BS, how standard and stand up for truth. You understand? Number two, why are they talking? Mr. Dorsett.
Mrs. Curry, let me, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you have a very powerful story.
You understand?
Please, 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 though, please, let Minister Dorsett try to give a response. Please, and I come for you. I come for you.
I, I agree with you. Ms. Curry has a very powerful story, and clearly it is a very emotional matter for Ms. Curry, and by extension, I would assume your family. But I think this is very instructive, because this evening, we have seen two people who have indicated that they have been victimized by two different political parties. And so, as my colleague, Mr. Lang, has said, and as I have said before, victimization is wrong. No one political party has the franchise on victimization. All have done it, it is wrong, and I hope that it will be removed from the fabric of how we conduct business. But I think, though, ma'am, and I want to be fair to Mr. Renato Curry, I don't think that running for the progressive Liberal Party means that he is a man who will tolerate or partake in victimization, and I do not want that to be leveled against him, all right? Because I think that Mr. Curry is a very decent young man, a Christian young man, and I do not want anyone to walk away this evening believing that that is something that Renato Curry believes in, or that Mr. Curry will partake in.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make myself brief in a little bit. What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to bring to you, Mr. Dorsett, okay, we were brought up and it was told that your parents are your earthly god. Mr. Dorsett, if someone have done that to your father, and he became ill because of that, dwindled down, that he couldn't take care of himself, he had to come back home after forty years for his brothers and sisters to help take care of him before he died, would you run for that party? Huh? Number two, I was a woman with a fifty-two weeks program. I got my letter August 31st in Freeport, and plus was given an application to reapply for a job. I am still waiting to hear somebody call me. I'm a bookkeeper by profession as well. I'm waiting for someone to call me. I have mortgage to pay. I have mortgage to pay, I had to take my daughter out of college to help take care of my husband. I said, "I have bills to pay, mortgages." And now, I act Mister Vishkam, who in the constituency where my business is, to assist me. But yes, but yes, he did not. So, let your letter-
We-
No, let's, let's continue.
We have to, we have to-
I wanted to ask them, let their letter-
We have, we have our brother here.
I don't mind, I want my father.
Mrs., Mrs. Curry. Wait a minute. Listen, one, we gotta take a break. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take a break, we'll be right back.
Welcome back to our National Town Hall meeting here in Marsh Harbor, Abaco. As we suspected, things got rather hot, and we are going to discontinue that line. We want to say that Mrs. Curry is not Renato Curry's mother. She is the widow of Mr. Curry's father. And we share her pain. Minister Kenred Dorsett, you also share that pain, as do other members of our panel. We want to reintroduce the members of our panel. Minister Kenred Dorsett, who is the Minister of Environment and Housing. Mister Dave Ralph, who is from the Abaco Chamber of Commerce. Senator Chavago Lang of the Free National Movement. Chief Counselor for Central Abaco, George Cornish. And Pastor Stephen Knowles, President of the Abaco Christian Council. We continue now with, uh, questions from our audience. My co-host for this evening is Silbert Mills.
Thank you.
Please, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. My name's Roscoe Thompson. I'm not here to bicker about F and M P L P, even though I do support the F and M today. My question is, what are we gonna do about immigration? I know that we have not touched on that here tonight, but we are faced a problem, a problem here in this country, not just here in Abaco, but you can see it very well here in Abaco with the shanty towns that we have. When are we going to address the illegal immigration that is transpiring here in the Bahamas and not sweep it under the rug? My point is, from 2002 to 2007, it wasn't dealt with. From 2007 to 2012, it wasn't dealt with. Earthquake, understandable circumstances, but it was not dealt with. Here we are in 2012. If we don't address this problem now, we are gonna sell our country out, especially here in Abaco. When you look at the mud, the peas, sandbanks, the farm, you don't know how many illegal immigrants are here in the Bahamas, not just in those areas, in the Keys, in different areas. Mister Dorsett, you are the governing party, or Minister Dorsett, y'all are the governing party now. What are y'all going to do to address the issues? Remind, we have fifteen immigration officers here, or seventeen, I, I forget, but it's in that range. For Treasure Key, Marsh Harbor, and nine Keys, it just is not functionable. Customs, police force, it, it's just unacceptable. My question is, and I can't ask Mister Lang this, because he is no longer there, but I'm asking you, what is your government going to do to make us feel safer in our own country?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Now, I think that we all can appreciate that illegal immigration has been a vexing issue in the Bahamas for a very long time. And I think that, uh, the, the question, sorry, what, the point that you made with respect to resources being made available on the ground, is, I think, a central part of how we begin to deal with it effectively. Abaco with seventeen to twenty persons is not sufficient to deal with the issues on Abaco as I know it, effectively. And so, one of the things that the current Minister of Immigration is doing is there's a training exercise where we are going to be bringing on, um, scores of new immigration officers, uh, to be deployed, uh, throughout the Bahamas to help us, uh, to try and manage the illegal immigration, uh, properly. And so, you know, it is a vexing issue that we face. I think that we stand committed to it, but the reality is, we do need additional human resources available to us for the detection, um, of illegal immigrants and to ensure that they are properly repatriated.
Are you satisfied with that answer?
Yes and no. Because you've been in power now four months, we haven't seen a raid, we haven't seen nothing, there has been no earthquake, there has been no natural disaster, you just passed a new budget. I know that the Ministry of Immigration, or the Department of Immigration, has a million dollars for expatration back to Haiti. Right here in Abaco, for ten years now, nothing has been done. Do you know the money that we can save on the education system, on social services, on healthcare, where Bahamians can go to the clinic and not wait in line behind eighty-five illegal people that are here? I, I, when does it stop? We, we always say we have the answers. When are we gonna stop talking and implement them? When are we gonna start doing that? I, I just wanna see something done. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think I, I agree with the position. I mean, if these are known facts on the ground in Abaco, um, then the question is, and I don't hold the brief for the Minister of Immigration, um, and I'm not, and, uh, uh, I can't speak specifically to all that he is doing within his department. But I do know that one of the issues that have been raised is expanding the resources available to the Department of Immigration, because he believes that there aren't sufficient numbers of immigration officers on the ground throughout our islands. And so, I believe that that is certainly a step in the right direction, um, because whether it is Exuma, Abaco, um, uh, Andros, or other islands, it is clear to me that we do need additional bodies on the ground to ensure that, uh, the Immigration Department is able to carry out their works effectively.
Ali McIntosh.
I, um, good evening, everyone, again. I just want to speak to the, the point of what has transpired in this room, and how do we bring-
Which point are you speaking about?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just speaking to the idea of governance, and the idea of what has happened, and the polarization and the pain-
We're not speaking to Mrs. Curry's-
No, no, I'm not speaking to that, I have no knowledge of that. I want to raise something that most people in the Bahamas have not heard. And it says, "This is the preamble of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas." It say, "Whereas the people of this family of islands recognize that the preservation of their freedom will be guaranteed by a national commitment to self-discipline, industry, loyalty, unity, and an abiding respect for Christian values and the rule of law. Now know ye therefore, we the inheritors of and successors to this family of islands, recognizing the supremacy of God and believing in the fundamental rights and freedom of the individual, do hereby proclaim in solemn praise the establishment of a free, democratic, sovereign nation founded on spiritual values in which no man, woman, or child shall ever be slave or bondsman to anyone, or their labor exploited, or their lives frustrated by deprivation, and do hereby provide by these articles for the indivisible unity and creation under God of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas." If we as a people, and part of the very number-one objective of the Bahamas Constitution Party, that if we as a people govern, and the government, whoever is governing, whether the, the political parties, pardon me, the government and the opposition, if we make the commitment to the rule of law, Christian values, we make a commitment that in this nation, as we did, as our founding fathers did, we would find a way to dispel this awful vile notion that is happening in the country. Because of the by-election, everybody have a right to vote. They have a right to vote for who they want to vote for.
Yes.
Everybody have a right to eat and to prosper in their country. So when they vote, they should not be victimized. When they vote, they should not have to be deprived of their income because they voted for somebody else. I believe it is necessary that we go back to this Constitution and this preamble, look at the objectives and the core value by which we should govern, and when we govern by them, we wouldn't have all of this bickering. We will have a more clearer, more peaceable, more compassionate governance. And I want the P L P to take that into consideration, I want the F and M to take that into consideration, because it's an objective of the Bahamas Constitution Party, and that is the reason why I stand, and if I must stand alone until people begin to recognize that we must work with what our founding fathers has brought to create this new nation. When they said that forty years ago, they wanted us to be Brothers Keeper. But today, we're not Brothers Keeper. So we must do our best to get back here. That's why I am here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We, we are going to invite our panelists to give their closing comments now. Our panel has been the Minister of Environment and Housing, Kenred Dorsett, Dave Ralph of the Abaco Chamber of Commerce, Senator Chavago Lang, Chief Counselor for Central Abaco, George Cornish, and the President of the Abaco Christian Council, Pastor Stephen Knowles. Pastor, you go first, and come in that order.
Thank you. I think that it is very important, in a nation that is considered to be a Christian nation, that there be a return, a return to the Bible. I think for too long, we are watching in this Commonwealth called the Bahamas, a people who are losing a regard for the Word of God, the principles of God's Word that once governed our forefathers. They had, they had less, Darrell. I was thinking the other day how my grandma didn't have what we have. But they were peaceable. They gave to one another, they looked out for one another, they protected one another. Whether today the Bahamas is governed by a P L P, or an F and M, an independent, uh, a Christian party, or the D N A party, it must be the kind of, of governance that will look out for all its people, all its people. And there should be no place in the Bahamas that if I decide to vote opposite of my family or friend, that I ought to be victimized, I ought to be criticized, I ought to be put down. There ought to be in this Bahamas, a celebration of all of us. And I'm praying, and I'm hoping, and I'm with anticipation, I'm looking forward to the return of that day, when we are our Brothers Keeper, where we look over one another, support each other, encourage each other, and when I'm down, when you look on me, it's not to further push me down, but a hand is extended to lift me up. That needs to come back to the Bahamas, and it can come back to the Bahamas if we as a nation will return and make the Word of God our fi, the final authority which will govern us as a people. That's my, that's my, that's my thoughts.
Thank you very, very much, Pastor Stephen Knowles, President of the Abaco Christian Council. Chief Counselor for Central Abaco, George Cornish, your closing comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Um, one thing that I've learned with politics is that, and since we are in this time, in this era where we are focusing on the by-election, I'll speak to, uh, mostly the election. I've learned that, um, and it's a sad thing, you know, that everything you do in life have consequences. Um, I've come to the conclusion in my life that I don't get involved in politics as much as I used to. Um, there, there's, there's this thing that if you are a chief counselor, a immigration chief, a, uh, customs chief, and you support the F and M, and the P L P wins, you might as well pack your bags. So with me personally, I don't get involved in the front line of politics, because when whoever wins and I on the other side, you know, I make a decision for myself personally, and the consequences, the suffering will be for the people that I represent. So I do not get involved. I tell my counselors, "Do not bring politics into my council meeting." When you come here, you come to represent the people of Central Abaco, that's what we do, leave the politics outside.
Thank you very much. And as we invite the remaining three panelists to give their closing comments, be minded that we only have four minutes left. Senator Chavago Lang.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to you as our hosts and to this audience. Let me just say, for the record, that Mister Dorsett, Minister Dorsett, who is on another political side, is no enemy of mine. I love him, I'm respectful. I, I thought he, I thought he represented himself very well tonight, and so forth. So there are no enemies, there are no enemies here. We are political opponents, but we will leave that at the debating table. Okay? And, and so, I wish, I wish that all of us will come to understand that differences in thought are not differences in person. That there's no level of hatred or anger that had to be extended to anyone because of a difference of view. And I believe that if we can do that, our democracy can flourish, and we can all, at the end of the day, continue to be Bahamians that love this country, crack conk, stew conk, conk salad, and all.
Thank you very much. Dave Ralph.
You've gotten me to disadvantage. I'm not a politician, I'm not a preacher, and I can't speak as eloquently as these other people. I can only comment that there's one quote I would like to give you. This is by Robert Service, who wrote a poem two hundred years ago in Alaska. And I point to my two colleagues here, "A promise made is a debt unpaid." So that all of the political promises-
It's a lot of debt.
Is a debt unpaid, and we still are looking for things. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Minister of the Environment.
I probably have all but thirty seconds, but I, I want to simply thank you for extending this invitation, uh, to me, Brother Mills, Darrell Miller, it's certainly been lively and provocative-
Thank you.
Uh, in, in, in the usual manner of your shows. But I, I think, you know, for me, um, I think it's very important for political leaders to send the message loudly and clearly, as Mister Lang has done, that we will always have differences of opinion, but on October 15th, as we cast our vote for whomever we decide we will support, we do so as Bahamians in a sovereign land. And on October 16th, the government of the Bahamas will still be here to serve the interests of all Bahamians. And so I thank you all this evening.
Thank you very much. My co-host, Silbert Mills, you have the very last word.
Well, I want to thank, uh, Cable Bahamas, Guardian Radio, and all of these wonderful people who've come to tonight, uh, just to see this democracy at work here in Abaco. There may have been some differences of opinion, and this is, again, politics, it's not Sunday School. That's why I opted for Sunday School.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. That's it, folks. We hope you have enjoyed it. Thank you to the entire crew from Cable 12 and Guardian Radio, to our producer, Juan McCartney. Thank you very much. Our executive producers, Carlton Smith and Alexia Coakley. This is Darrell Miller, hoping it's been lively and provocative.